The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Call call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
At this time I would ask Amy to, uh, file the open office to our newly incoming Freeholder, Leslie Koppel.
Um, okay, first I will read a letter regarding the appointment of Leslie Koppel of Monroe who will fill the vacancy of Freeholder Carol Valenti. The letter is from the Middlesex Democratic Organization. It is dated February 16th, 2017, to Amy Petrichelli, Clerk of the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders. Dear Clerk Petrichelli, this will serve to certify that in conformance with NJSA 19: 13-20, the Middlesex County Democratic Organization selected the following individual to fill the unexpired term of Freeholder Carol Valenti at their convention on Wednesday, February 15th, 2017, at Middlesex County College. Leslie Koppel, 10 Andrew Drive, Monroe Township, New Jersey, 08831. This will further certify that Ms. Koppel is qualified under the laws of the State of New Jersey to be a candidate for the office of Middlesex County Freeholder and is a member of the Democratic Party. Attached here too is a certification from Leslie Koppel as required by NJSA 19:13-20. Sincerely, Kevin McCabe, Chairman, Middlesex County Democratic Organization.
I, Leslie Koppel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
And in the state.
And in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of Member of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
All the duties of Member of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
According to the best of my abilities, I will leave.
According to the best of my abilities, I will help you out.
At this point in time, I'd ask Amy to now issue the open office, uh, actually nomination for administration of all those for Deputy Director at this point in time.
The Board will now consider a nomination for the position of Deputy Director. Is there such motion?
I make a, uh, just go ahead. All right. I make a motion to, uh, have Charlie Tamaro, uh, be our Deputy Director. In the three years that I've gotten to know Charlie, um, I've learned that he is a very hardworking and dedicated, um, elected official who, um, who works very hard to meet the needs of the residents here in Middlesex County. And so therefore I'd like to move a nomination for, or make a nomination for Deputy Director.
Okay, a nomination was made by Freeholder Kenny. Is there a second?
I second the motion. I agree with everything that Freeholder Kenny said about Charlie. He's been, we've been sitting together for quite a while and I admire him greatly for all his talents. So you are, I second your nomination.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now take the role for the, uh, position of Deputy Director. Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
I, Charlesy Tamaro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of Deputy Director of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
Deputy Director of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
I will help you out.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chris.
Congratulations. For. Congratulations. Yes.
He's been here for six years.
Before I make any comments, I would like to ask Leslie, would she like to make any comments?
There's a lot of people that I want to thank tonight. The people who just walked in and certainly held Bible for me just in the nick of time. My children, Jacob, Remi, and Avery, my support system at home. Also, I come from a great town of Monroe Township and I've served on the council there for 10 years, most recently as Council President. And my biggest motivation and the biggest satisfaction that I get from public service is finding things that spark and motivate, sometimes it could be even a little fanatical, but of answering and helping people in the community reach their goals and what they need from local government. It's a lot of satisfaction. Um, I know with working with this great Freehold Board, I'm really excited about the energy and the teamwork, um, that we're going to be able to provide, the same satisfaction and the same high level of service in, on the county level. Uh, just as a note, in, um, Monroe Township, uh, which is the town where I grew up, I'm 50 years old, I was born and raised in Monroe, and, um, but the Freehold Board in Monroe Township has always worked closely with the town in order to preserve open, open space. Um, it's taken care of our roads and it's taken great care of Monroe Township. And as I move forward on the Freehold level, I hope to work with all the municipalities in the same way to provide that level of service. So I look forward to working with this great team. Um, I know the Director Rios isn't here this evening, but working with him and everyone else on the Freehold Board. Just want to say thank you guys and I look forward to the teamwork.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, last night I said this and I think it's worth repeating, you know, David Crabbio said, "We live in the greatest county in the nation." You know, and, um, we do. And the reason why we live in the greatest county is because of our, our men and women who come to work every day, day in and day out, to make our job easy. And I want to thank you for all you do to make this county what it is today. Um, you know, I've had the pleasure for the last two years to oversee the Infrastructure Department, you know, from Khalid Ajan, Amen, you know, what a gentleman. You were truly, anytime I reached out for you and, um, made a phone call, um, you were there and you made sure you returned my call and, uh, any issues that I had, you really took care of them and I appreciate that and, uh, I want to thank you for the service that you provided for me and, uh, anytime I needed anything, you were there. And that's everybody in, in this department, from Gary Vince, the, the Road Department. I often brag to people, you know, that I speak to, uh, in construction, that when we do a road in the county, it's much better than what the, what the contractors do. You have a great crew that do a wonderful job. Anytime we have a snowstorm, I've gotten three phone calls in the six years that I've been here because you do such a great job that nobody needs to call. Now, I'm sure you get mayors to call you, so I don't know what mayors are calling you. I hear once in a while the mayor from Carteret might get after you, but, uh, other than that, um, you know, you, you just do a fabulous job and thank you, thank you, uh, very much. George Verdis and I, you know, um, you know, George has done an absolutely fabulous job with the Planning Department and how he runs it and the people that is working for him. Uh, he always fills in for me at the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority and thank you for taking care of that and, you know, keeping me updated with what's going on with the state. Uh, Rich Warner, our engineer, um, I, sometimes I want to be the fly on the wall when I make that phone call to Rich, because how many times I call him and, uh, you know, it, uh, to find things out about what's, you know, what, what's going on with the light on Oak Tree and, uh, and Woodland Avenue, the, the light on May Street and Woodbridge Avenue, or the paving programs that are coming up, or anything in engineering. Thank you, uh, the issue in Manalapan with the drainage. Uh, you know, anytime that Rich take, you know, takes, does something, you know, he gets it done and thank you, Rich, for all you've done, you know, with me and, you know, make my job easy. Rick Lear, uh, what can't be said about Rick, um, with the Parks Department. You know, I, I don't mind bragging about it, you know, I always bragged about the parks in Edison. Boy, do our parks in the county make any park look terrible. You know, you, you're, I've always, you know, any emails, I get a lot of emails from different people about how well we take care of our parks. And not only do we take care of them, but we, we upgrade them. Uh, this last few years, we've, we've replaced all the, all the playground equipment, all the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the paving that we did in Roosevelt Park when I asked to get that done. Uh, working together with me at, you know, for Plays in the Park. You know, with this last year, we, uh, we invited veterans to come out and enjoy an evening. We had over 200 veterans and their families come out and enjoyed South Pacific and it was a great evening. And next year we're going to expand that program, hopefully. And we also changed the starting time, you know, we start at 8:30. Uh, we had a few shows starting at 7:30 and every show we started at 7:30, those were our largest attended nights. And this year we're going to change the time to eight o'clock and, uh, so people can get home earlier and, uh, enjoy the show. So thank you for working with me on that and, uh, um, you know, keep up the great work. And, uh, just want to thank you once again for, for making my job what it is and making it easy. All right, we're going with the recognitions.
Okay, we have a few recognitions this evening. First is proclaiming American Heart Month in Middlesex County for February 2017. Next, recognizing Robert McCoy as he receives a 2017 Prad Arturo Alfonso Schoenberg Award. And last is recognizing hidden heroes, the Elizabeth Dole Foundation.
May I motion to adopt the above resolutions?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
I'd just like to highlight the recognizing the hidden heroes, uh, from, um, Senator Elizabeth Dole. This is, uh, an organization that she started a few years ago and counties and, uh, townships are starting to adopt recognizing these hidden heroes. These hidden heroes are the, the, uh, men and women who help and, uh, um, the wounded warriors, the ones who have been wounded during the war, they're, they're helping them get better. And so now they're, they have a program to recognize them. There's about 26 of them in New Jersey and I think we have about three or four of them in Middlesex County. So, uh, this is just one way to recognize those people, don't get any recognition. So, I want to thank Elizabeth Dole for doing that and we'll send that resolution off to her. Um, there's no presentations, correspondence please.
Each Freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's Office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the Office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
May I motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
May I have a second? Voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes for approval?
Uh, the Board of Chosen Freeholders' regular meeting, February 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM.
May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Upstee.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Uh, public ordinances, uh, we're going to open, uh, we have a public hearing, final adoption. Clerk, please read, uh, the ordinance, 431, by title only.
The notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on February 9th, 2017. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, held February 2nd, 2017. Refunding bond ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, providing for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings and authorizing the issuance not to exceed $45 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds, therefore, and authorizing public hearing to be held on Thursday, February 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM and publication thereof.
Uh, we'll open this up for public comment. You may, um, comment on this ordinance and this ordinance only if you'd like to. May I motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Uh, we're going to have a public hearing, our Green Acres Development Application for Middlesex County Waterfront Park in Perth Amboy. Clerk, please read the, um...
This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, held January 19th, 2017. Notice of this public hearing appeared in the Home News Tribune and the Amboy Guardian on January 11th, 2017. Rick Lear will make a statement in connection with this application.
All right, thank you, Freeholder. Pursuant to NJAC 7:36-12.2B of the Green Acres Regulations, this public hearing is being held in conjunction with an application to Green Acres Program for the development of recreational facilities at the Middlesex County Waterfront Park in the city of Perth Amboy. The grant would support the construction of a multi-use field, baseball field, playground, waterfront, walkway, and other recreational amenities. County of Middlesex is requesting $4,724,142 in Green Acres funding with a county match of $1,574,714. Conceptual drawing and budget for this application has been prepared by Nigerian Associates on behalf of the county and is available on the desk by the door. Notification of this public hearing was published pursuant to NJAC 7:36-12.2B1. Each speaker will have the opportunity to comment on this Green Acres application once for a period not to exceed five minutes.
Uh, open a public portion on this, anyone like to speak on this ordinance, may do so now. Name and address and you have five minutes.
Thanks, good evening, Mr. Deputy Director and congratulations on the new position.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the, uh, new Freeholder. Uh, just wanted to ask a few questions about this. Is this the Rosengarten Track?
You need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charles Cradaville, from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today.
Okay. What was that question?
Is this the Rosengarten Track?
Yes.
This is, okay. And is, uh, there any contamination?
There, there is some contamination, but it's, and Rosengarden's portion, it's not major, um, but there are other, Rick?
There is, but that is actually not the subject of the, of the public hearing at this point. Public hearing is to receive comment on the proposed Green Acres application, which is for the recreational development.
Okay, well, uh, I think that there should be more said about the contamination before it's approved.
Well, I think at the last meeting you mentioned it, didn't you? The last time we had an hearing, you mentioned it, didn't you?
I think some people asked about it, I think journalists asked about it and an article came out about it, but that was, uh, more than a year ago and I want to see what's, uh, what's the current status and I think that, you know, before any action is taken, any, uh, you know, multimillion dollar applications are submitted, uh, I'd at least like to know the answers, man. I hope the Freeholders would also want to know them.
Well, I think it's, you can ask that at the open public portion because this portion has nothing to do with that part of it.
Okay, so this application is just going to be filed, uh...
With the state.
It's just going to be filed, uh, no matter what the public has to say tonight? Or, I mean, is it, do you, I'm asking a procedural question, are you going to vote on this or...
This is the public hearing only.
This is just a public hearing.
Right.
Okay, well then my, my comments would be that I think there should be further investigation into the status of the contamination, the remediation for the site. Um, and I think it's something that the DEP would probably want to know crystal clear, what can, what types of contamination there is and...
We'll take that in consideration.
And, um, and, you know, evaluate that in terms of, uh, what makes sense there. Uh, and it, just let me understand also the use of the park. Uh, is this going to be for the VOTEC school during certain hours of the day, or is this going to be a 24-hour-a-day public park? What is the, uh, plan for the, um, the, the public access, public use of it?
Public access to the park will be the same as all of our parks, so it'll be a combination of scheduled activities such as school sports, um, but it'll also be open and available for, uh, you know, adult leagues, lights on the field, so that'll kind of increase the opportunity for adult league play in the evenings, which a lot of times go out west for, as well as it's a, it's an open park, so it'll be a playground, waterfront walkway, so it'll be, uh, you know, completely accessible during, you know, the park hours, which generally, in the county, are, unless other scheduled, like, kind of, activities.
Gotcha, okay. And, uh, the VOTEC will, uh, VOTEC's across the street, right? They might use it as well, is that fair to say?
As with all, as with all of our parks, if the VOTEC needs, uh, place to play, then they call the office, we can schedule them in, as we do with, uh, given the opportunity for a lot of high schools throughout the area to, uh, do all these activities.
Okay, well, thanks for answering my questions and hearing me out.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak on this, uh, public meeting? May I motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public meeting.
May I have a second? Roll call? I mean, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go on to Freeholders' reports, Mr. Charles Kenny. Any report?
Uh, a quick one.
Okay.
Uh, tonight we approved the ordinance for, uh, 431 for the refunding of, uh, the general improvement bonds. Uh, the current average interest rate on those, on those two bond series is a, a little over 4%. The projected interest rate of the refunding is about 2.5%, which is about a $1.5 million savings to the county over the, the remainder of the bonds. Um, there, uh, we've also, over the last, uh, five years, the county has refunded about 250 million in bonds and realized the savings of about 13.5 million. Uh, we've taken advantage, and this is the last, um, set of bonds that we have that can be refinanced at the rates that are going currently. So, uh, it's, it's a great job done by the Finance Department, making sure that we take advantage of the low interest rates to, uh, save money for the taxpayers here in Middlesex County. Um, just one other thing I'd, I'd like to touch on real quick. March 4th, not March 4th, I'm sorry, February 4th, we had a flag raising here, a Pan-African flag raising, um, it was the first one here in Middlesex County. It was the kickoff Black History Month. Um, it was done with, uh, the cooperation of the Middlesex County Democratic Young Black Caucus, uh, the county Freeholders, and, um, it was, it was a great time, we had about 70 people here and it was a good event, so that's all I have, uh, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Uh, Freeholder Koppel?
No report.
No report. Freeholder Nara?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Director. As, uh, part of the 2017 initiatives, the county is in the process of setting up cooking oil drop-off sites at six of our municipalities, which will be fully functional and operational by April 1st of this year. Uh, this program will benefit the county, our residents, and the environment. Cooking oil that's poured down the drain can stick to pipes and block sewer lines and oil that is disposed of in, uh, the garbage truck can lead, leak onto roadways. Collected cooking oil has value as a recycled commodity and can be recycled into biodiesel fuel or reprocessed to feed livestock into manufacture soap, makeup, rubber, and detergents. Uh, each of these sites will be open for four hours on either a Friday or Saturday and residents will receive a container to use to transport their cooking oil to the closest drop-off site. A containment system, sign, and spill supplies for each location, as well as the residential containers have been purchased by the county. Middlesex County residents can use any of the sites which will be located in the following six municipalities. East Brunswick, Metatchin, Monroe, Olbridge, South Plainfield, and Woodbridge. We appreciate the cooperation of the participating towns in this shared services program. Residents can check the county's website or call 732-745-4170 for additional information or if they have any questions. Additionally, I wanted to mention the workshop on, workshop on reentry into the workplace. On February 8th, 2017, approximately 100 individuals with juvenile or adult criminal records attended a program that outlined the proper way to have records, criminal records permanently removed from court and law enforcement files. For individuals that were found ineligible to qualify for an expungement, this workshop guided them through the legal barriers they may face during the employment process. During the session, a representative from the New Jersey Reentry Cooperation led a discussion geared to those individuals who need guidance for employment and training solutions, in addition to addressing obstacles such as restoration of their driver's license or public benefits. A portion of the workshop included information about the Middlesex County One Stop Career Center, otherwise known as OSCC, and the requirements needed to receive OSCC services, types of reentry-friendly individual training accounts, and available employment opportunities. The event was sponsored by the Superior Court of New Jersey, the Middlesex Vicinage, the Middlesex County Bar Association, the Legal Services of New Jersey, the New Jersey Reentry Cooperation, and the Middlesex County Office of Workforce Development. And that concludes my report for this evening, Deputy Director.
Freeholder Valente?
Thank you, uh, Freeholder Deputy Director. In celebration of Passport Awareness Month, the Middlesex County Clerk's Office will be open for special weekend hours from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, March the 4th, uh, to process U.S. passport applications. These hours should be especially helpful to residents who would like to apply for a U.S. passport for their spring and summer travel, but find it difficult to take time off from work or to take children out of school during the week. In addition to processing passports, the county clerk's office will also be administering notary ults to those who have applied to the State of New Jersey to become an honorary public and have already received their commission back from the state. Information on passport fees and requirements can be found on the State Department's website at travel.state.gov. And on March the 18th, the county's Office of Aging and Disabled Services will hold an event called Disability Connections: An Information and Resource Fair. The event will run from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Edison Senior Center on Woodbridge Avenue in Edison and will include more than 20 agencies that will provide information and supportive services for adults with disabilities and their caregivers. Please RSVP to March, by March the 1st, to the Office of Aging and Disabled Services at 732-745-4512 if you would like to attend. And again, congratulations, Deputy Director, on your being, uh, sworn into that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Valente, and I want to thank my colleagues for supporting me, which I forgot to mention before. You know, we just passed Groundhog's Day on February 2nd and my wife often reminds me, that's the day I proposed to her. She said to the audience today, "If you haven't heard, Milltown, Mill, Middlesex County's own Milltown Mel fell to see his shadow that morning, which predicts an early spring." So, this weekend, 60 degrees. Thank you to all employees who kept, kept our roads clean and our plow, and plowed during the recent snowstorm event on February 9th. Even though we're, it's still very cold in the end of the winter, I just want to remind everyone that it's still a great time to get out and enjoy our county parks. The Roosevelt Family Ice Skating Rink, which is open with sessions Saturday and Sunday, with three sessions, um, um, one from the 12:30, uh, sessions one from 12:30 to 2:30 and session two, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and session three, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Also, I'm happy to announce that, that the teams can now start to register for the 2017 Freeholders Youth Basketball Tournament. This annual tournament is available for any youth team in Middlesex County. Four age divisions provide opportunities for ages 10 to 17. Deadline for registration is February 28th, so please visit the county website or call Aaron at our Parks Office at 732-745-4222. Register a team now for an exciting event. Uh, teams are also being sought for the Middlesex County Parks and Recreation Adult Slow Pitch Softball Leagues, with sessions planned for both spring and fall. Those interested can register now and begin early as March 2017. The deadline to register is March 10th for spring sessions. For more information for slow pitch softball, please call Aaron Carroll at 732-745-4222. Mr. Counsel, do we have any, uh, resolution to add?
Uh, yes, Deputy Director, we have, uh, one resolution to add and that's to amend the Administrative Code of the County of Middlesex for 2017 to revise the Table of Organization. Uh, this resolution is to reflect the addition of our new Freeholder and the appropriate assignment, the, and change of assignments with regard to the Freeholder Committees.
for slow pitch softball, please call Aaron Carroll at 732-745-4222. Mr. Council, do we have any, uh, resolution to add?
Uh, yes, Deputy Director. We have, uh, one resolution to add, and that's to amend the Administrative Code of the County of Middlesex for 2017 to revise the table of organization. Uh, this resolution is to reflect the addition of our new freeholder and the appropriate assignment, the, and change of assignments with regard to the freeholder committees.
May I have a motion to add Resolution 17-308?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamara?
Yes.
And that'll be Resolution 17308.
17308. Uh, any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
I will open a public portion on these resolutions and these resolutions only.
Good evening once again. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Just a couple of questions for you. I'd like to ask about that last one that you just added, the, uh, change of assignments, which, uh, which assignments are changing, or is it just, uh, the new freeholder assuming all of the same responsibilities?
Uh, actually, no. Uh, the Deputy Director will now be responsible for administration, as typically the Deputy Director does. Uh, Freeholder Koppel will assume responsibility for the Finance Committee, and, uh, Freeholder Kenny will assume responsibility for infrastructure management, which was previously chaired by Freeholder Tamara.
Okay. I'm sorry. Who's taking over finance?
Freeholder Koppel.
Okay. Thank you. Um, just a couple other questions. I see, uh, 244, 17-244 is a $649,000 Environmental Health Grant. Can you tell me what the purpose of that is, what that's going for?
Deputy Director? That was a amendment that we made, uh, in 2016 that should have been part of the 2017 budget. Uh, so that's why we're, we're doing the, um, resolution tonight. Um, and that's been, uh, ordered by the state that we make that change.
Okay. And what is this $649,000 for?
Joe?
It's a CIA grant. Mickey, if you want to explain this. It's a CIA grant for environmental health.
That is, uh, that is called the county environmental. Right. Uh, it's a mistake. Provide environmental services and inspections.
Environmental services and inspections. I guess you provide those to the towns, or?
Provide entirely to the Middlesex County.
Thank you. And I think one more I wanted to ask about, uh, agreement with the City of New Brunswick. It's a long agenda here. Uh, 301, this agreement with the City of New Brunswick execution of a health services contract. Can you just tell me what the, uh, nature of that agreement is and what the $241,000 pays for?
Essentially, uh, Middlesex County Health Office provides, uh, services to all but two municipalities as a regional service. Rather than the municipality having their own office, we run it on their behalf. And that's the fees associated running that operation.
Which two have their own?
Edison and Woodbridge.
Thank you. All right, that's all. Anyone else like to speak on the resolutions? May I motion to close the resol, um, uh, public portion for the resolutions?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, uh, any items have to be removed for separate vote on the agenda this evening?
I don't believe so.
Don't believe so. Um, Mr. Council?
Yes, Deputy Director. A motion would then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 17-230 through Resolution 17-308.
Motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamara?
Yes. And now we will open a public portion, and we can speak on any, any item you'd like to speak on. You have five minutes. Name and address, please.
Thanks. Good evening once again. I'm Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. We're a community newspaper. It's available online and in print. Uh, I have several questions, so I'll just, uh, go through them all, and a few comments I'll weave in there, and then hopefully you can answer as many as, as possible. Um, first, I need to know, um, uh, the outcome of a lawsuit filed against the county by, uh, Rachel Peroni, um, or, or, you know, what the update is on that case. I have to ask, if you could please ask the warden to, uh, give me an update on, uh, the $100 that was taken from me when I was in the, uh, the jail, uh, and whether or not they're going to give me that $100 back. Um, I want to, uh, ask also for a progress update on the improvements to the inmate access to communications that we've been having back and forth about with the warden. Um, want to reiterate my statements previously about two dangerous county roads and, and agree with what you said about the county doing a great job on the road projects. I think we need some work done here on Easton Avenue and on French Street in New Brunswick, because they're both high pedestrian areas that lack sometimes even basic, uh, amenities like crosswalks, um, on, on major intersections. And I, I've mentioned it before. I hope that people are taking notice, and, uh, I'm not sure if anybody from the Traffic Commission of New Brunswick has reached out, but, uh, I would, I, I hope they do, and I hope that, uh, somebody from the county can show up to the Traffic Commission meeting on February 2nd at 1:30 PM. It's in the council chambers of City Hall, and I know that, um...
February 2nd passed.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. The 2nd of March. Uh, it's March 2nd at 1:30 PM, and, uh, that's a meeting that is open to the public. And I hope the county can send a representative, because a lot of times issues come up and, you know, the, the, sort of, everybody's left, um, with uncertainty because it's a county road and we have to check with the county, and, and you know how it is. So, would appreciate it if somebody could come to that meeting and we could discuss firsthand with the, everybody at the table, Easton Avenue and French Street, before somebody gets hurt or killed, uh, and so we can, so we can make those roads safer. I do want an update on the ethics matter that I brought to the county's attention. The, um, Ethics Board has basically said that it's going to rely on the County Council's office to make a determination about, uh, whether or not Mr. Vignolo is required to, uh, file a financial disclosure statement, and I'd like to hear from the County Council's office about that. I'd also like an update on the Tax Board and, and their efforts to replace Mr. Verislov, who I know passed away. Um, and, uh, would also like updates on the, uh, demolition of the Wolfson parking deck and the, um, uh, project on Livingston Avenue, as well as the State Theater, or the, uh, the Theater, New Brunswick Cultural Center project. And then lastly, I want to bring to your attention, uh, you know, I know I've, I've mentioned some of the corruption problems at City Hall across the street. Uh, there are two people from the water utility that are charged criminally with, uh, um, uh, official misconduct in a, in a bribery scandal. It's, uh, William Ortiz and Joe DeBonus. And I was a little surprised when I checked to see they're going to be in court February 27th at 9:00 AM, and you'll never guess who the judge is, Ben Buca. So, wow. What are the chances that probably the only judge who worked, worked for the City of New Brunswick for decades in that building draws the case involving the, the defendants from the City of New Brunswick? And, uh, gosh, that seems to me like, uh, a conflict. Just six or seven months ago, Ben was working for the City of New Brunswick. Uh, and for him to be the judge in this case involving city corruption is probably not a great idea. And I've also learned, if that's not enough, that, uh, the defendant, Mr. Ortiz, well, his, his wife, uh, works at the county courthouse, uh, as a secretary to, uh, another judge named Judge Corson. And, uh, both of these things combined make me concerned that this case is being heard in Middlesex at all, and I don't think it should be, and I think the freeholders should use whatever, uh, influence you have to make sure that this case gets a, a full and fair hearing in a, in a, in a fair courtroom, so.
Charlie, respectfully, we cannot influence any, any cases going in front of a Superior Court judge. Mark, did you want to ask?
Who, who can I go to to, to help? To, to, like, should I?
I would suggest you go to the assignment judge.
Assignment judge. Okay. I'll, I'll do that, then.
Okay. Mark?
Uh, so as to the $100, Charlie, I should, I should have responded by the middle of next week, Director. On it, and as far as technology's concerned, um, we've talked a little bit about prior, but we're built to that center out of jail site, so we have to structure that to be a place to support all stuff that we want to bring to the jail for communication and, and PS and tablets, no country. So that's...
That's time.
...in progress. And we also, we took off, we recently installed a new jail access.
Time.
We should be part of that implementation. We have that structure in place. A lot of the, and communication, circle, tools, just allow them to get, uh, they can all do.
Okay, Charlie, the time's expired. We'll try to answer as many questions as you can. Uh, any updates on the Wolfson Garage?
The Wolfson Garage is...
Coming down.
Commenced demolition already.
Okay.
Uh, with regard to your, your question, with regard to the status of the ethics complaint, as indicated to you previously, the, the Office of County Council is reviewing the complaint, and in due course, it will make its findings and recommendations to the Ethics Board. Um, you had another question about the Cultural Center project?
I had, uh, well, yes, and also Rachel Peroni's case and the Tax, uh, Tax Board replacing Mr. Verislov.
Uh, I honestly don't recall exactly the status of the Peroni case. I believe it's in the course of discovery right now, but I don't recall exactly.
Okay, it's still ongoing.
Yeah. The Cultural Center project, as you know, is, uh, in the process of, still being developed, but it's expected that there will be, uh, uh, application before the Planning Board before the spring, and, uh, development to commence during, during the summer of this year.
It's saying, it'll take about two years to complete.
All right. And I'll probably see you at the Planning Board.
Probably so.
Great. Okay.
I usually do.
And the efforts to replace Mr. Verislov, is there a, are they interviewing?
Essentially, we're looking at the overall operations in the tax office right now, and our intent is, and the nifty is to obviously go out and do a search for a replacement.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in the open public portion? May I motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.